Now, I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for Tuesday, May 12th. And John, would you like to offer your disclaimers?
Want to do that before the Pledge of Allegiance and all that? Or what would you prefer?
We can do the Pledge of Allegiance. And again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty for all. Okay. Item number three is roll call, please.
Councilmember Crater. Here. Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Pardini.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips. Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, a quorum is present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask the minutes reflect that under Section 610.015 of the Missouri Sunshine Law, members of the city council who are not physically present in the council chambers can participate and vote. All matters when an emergency exists and the nature of the emergency must be stated in the minute. So I'd ask the minutes reflect that we are still in a state of emergency with coronavirus, also known as COVID-19. As a result of that, we want to avoid the spread of the coronavirus by not having a gathering of 10 or more people and staying at a safe distance. Therefore, the members of the city council and staff have elected to participate in this meeting electronically, the public health and safety of each other and the general public. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is the approval of the council agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any changes? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Item number six is the public forum. Anthony, do we have anyone logged in?
We have.
From the public?
We have three members of the public.
Okay, and at this point, have there been any requests to speak?
I show none.
You can either raise your hand. If you're an attendee, and then we can let you speak. We'll give you about five or 10 seconds.
Okay. Keep in mind that if you, you know, if, if there's something that we discuss that you would like to talk about later on, right after our main agenda items, there'll be another public forum later on. So if you miss this one, you'll still have an opportunity. So we're going to move directly to announcements. Are there any announcements?
Well, we have, the city has a new street sweeper. And streets will be done on the first and third week of every month. And the bulky trash pickup resumes this week, but you can only put out two items. And then after this, in June, it'll be the full pickup, trash pickups again for bulky. And yard waste resumes this week as well.
Great. I'm looking forward to that.
I have one announcement.
Yes.
So the Nelson Mitten Scholarship was recently established and named for longstanding MRH board member and an important member of the MRH community. The fund will provide, as I understand it, this fund is going to provide three seniors with funds to contribute toward college with $500 toward their first year, $500 toward their second year of college. There was a fundraiser for this on March 12th, and I heard that that was successful and a lot of fun. And that was also immediately prior to the shutdown, beginnings of the shutdown for COVID-19. So if folks are feeling the giving spirit in this time, they can contribute to this fund to send off seniors. And there's a link on the MRH website. It's mrhschools-square-site if people are interested in contributing to that scholarship fund.
Okay. On a similar note, our Kiwanis Club gave away three $1,000 scholarships for next year. And we're trying to do that every year. But that, that process is done through the school district, and so the decisions have been made. And if you know someone next year that might be interested, then make sure that they apply. We had some really good students, too. Any other announcements? Okay. Then next item is the approval of the April 28, 2020 city council meeting minutes and closed session minutes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just have one slight correction where it says the motion for, to hold a closed session. It just says that we held a closed session for personnel matter. And actually, I made a motion for contractual matter as well. There were two different things, so I just thought we wanted to update that.
Okay. Let the record be revised then accordingly. And are there any other modifications? In that case, all those in favor? Aye.
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 We have a latency issue, I think. Any opposed? Then the, the council meeting minutes have been approved. Next item is item number nine. Anthony?
Resolution of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri requesting that municipalities within St. Louis County receive an equitable distribution of the 175 million in funding received by St. Louis County from the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act to reimburse municipalities for actual public safety costs incurred related to COVID-19.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about this resolution?
I had a question about the item, like item number six. Whereas the county council has appropriated the entirety of the 175 million from the CARES Act and has given the county executive absolute authority over the use and distribution of these funds without further review by the county council. I, I thought that the county executive always has overspending. And that the, that the charter, the county charter gives the county executive authority, and that what the county council did was say that you don't have to come back to ask for another to, for, for disbursement of the remaining funds. So it's not that, like, the council appropriated the money, and it's the charter that gives the executive the authority to spend the money.
I don't believe that's true, Eleanor. I've studied the county ordinances in the county charter. There are certainly a process that is supposed to take place with respect to St. Louis County, and I'm not speaking as the county councillor. But the process that takes place, but the separate ordinance that was specifically adopted that appropriated entirety of the funds and turned over all of those funds to the county executive. So the county executive, within his sole and absolute authority, then going to use and distribute those funds as he deems fit without any oversight from the county council. That's what that says.
Okay. In the second page, where the dates are, the, there's a little typo in the dates that is not in the memo. The memo says March 27th, or it says March today, and the actual resolution says May 27th.
Yeah, that should be, that should be March 27th, which was the date of the order. May 8th, we'll change that for sure.
Okay. And with regards to the dispersment of the money, I received a, an email from Councilwoman Clancy this afternoon, this evening. And I forwarded that to Anthony and to Laura Miller. But apparently, let me just read a portion of this. As my office continues to outline the process of how District 5 will be assessing St. Louis County's small business relief program applicants. I want to touch base with you about two important issues. For starters, we received word from the county executive's office that the application for the program will close at 11:59 on Sunday, May 17th. The most recent figures show that only 1,950 applicants have been submitted across the entire county, and we have nearly 8,000 small businesses in District 5 alone. In these last critical days, please be sure to continue doing outreach through your channels to ensure thorough outreach. And in addition, Lisa will be holding a town hall meeting this Thursday, May 14th, at 7 o'clock to provide an overview of the grant program, discuss how District 5 plans to navigate this process, hear from residents and businesses, business owners about priorities for funding, and answer questions about the program. And this event is to provide information. It's not a platform to lobby for specific businesses to receive funds. It's open to all members of the public. And it's a great opportunity for residents and businesses to provide feedback. And let's see, the, it's a call-in meeting. And so I'm not sure how we, how we make that available to everyone, but certainly.
Social media.
I'm sorry.
We need social media and stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm hoping that Laura will, will take this. She's been in touch with, with almost all of our businesses in town to, to assist them in, in applying for, for funds. So hopefully, we can get our share of, of this relief aid. So.
But this particular resolution right now is asking for public safety payroll costs for the eligibility period to relative proportion from whatever county is going to spend on public safety to be shared with municipalities based on population, correct? That's what the request is for?
Yes.
That's what, so, so that's the resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What Barry was talking about, what Barry was talking about was the, the business. I believe it was $17 million. It was separate than this, but um, yeah, still something I think we need to pass. And that's assuming that the county ends up using money for, for their services. They don't have fire services, but that's assuming they do. We're just asking for equitable share. And to me, it's a fantastic opportunity to provide relief to all the municipalities throughout St. Louis County. You'll see a lot of municipalities if they haven't done so. We'll be passing a similar resolution.
I was going to ask if municipalities are doing the same thing that you know of?
Could you say that again, Sandy? I'm sorry.
I was going to ask if other municipalities are already doing this that we know about?
Yes, we, we had a meeting of probably 30, 32 city administrators, managers last winter on this. And we, I had another one of about 15 today. There's probably even, there's probably going to be at least three that were on that meeting. We'll be doing the same thing this week, and then others will follow.
Okay, yeah, and the, the emails since I just received, it isn't directly related to that particular aspect of, of the, the relief program. So maybe I should have done that during the mayor's communication. Are there any questions about this resolution then, the way it's written? Any other questions? If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I'm sorry. You're right. Need a roll, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crater.
Yes.
Resolution 20-17 is approved.
Thank you. Item number 10, please.
Resolution of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to purchase a 2020 heavy-duty, three-quarter ton Chevrolet Silverado truck for $40,671.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions about this purchase? And yeah, that Ford Ranger 1996.
It's old.
That's the one that Jamone was, was driving?
No, that one will be next year. That, it was a much smaller one, if anyone remembers the former parts. Tom Grozer used to drive that truck. That's how old it is.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any.
The funds that this is coming from, they both have fund balances.
Oh, yes. Yeah, this is going to be 50% from the 2,400, 50% from 2,800. Both have over $2 million in fund balance.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions regarding the, the purchase of the truck? If not, Anthony Hoot, you know, with the police vehicle program that gets purchased through the state through, you know, their buying program, is this just an individual purchase?
This is through the state as well.
Okay.
Um, yeah. Yeah, we do all of our vehicle purchases. That way, we get a fantastic deal usually.
Okay. And we're not getting anything for the other, for the 1996?
No, no, we're just gonna, we're gonna.
You're gonna pay them to take it?
Yeah. I was gonna say, sorry.
In that case, since there's no other questions or comments, can we have a roll call?
Park that Omen over on Vine.
Yeah. I've got just the place, too, Ray. Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crater.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Resolution 20-18 is approved.
Okay. Item number 11 is the second public forum. And have we had anyone raise their hand electronically?
Not yet, but now is the time, if you'd like to speak, just go ahead and press the raise your hand button.
Which can be found up in the upper right-hand corner under the three dots that say more. There's, there's several options, but one of them is to be able to raise your hand. So we'll give everyone a couple of seconds to see if they want to contribute. And if not, okay, well, let's, let's move on to council. Item number 12, council communication. Is there any council communication?
I was wondering if we could do a check-in on the city manager search and talk about pinging Mr. Slaven for our, the revised, what's it called?
Profile.
Profile, recruitment profile. If if Webster is starting a search fairly soon, we might not want to be competing too closely with them.
To me, the criteria, first of all, I did talk with Bob Slaven, and he indicated that we wouldn't be paying for any services that we didn't use. So you know, if, if we postpone this for however long, we won't be charged for that, that scope of work until he actually performs that. So with that in mind, the, you know, for, for me, the criteria is, you know, A, you know, will this keep, will this situation keep people from applying for the position? I think it, I think until things settle down, I think there's a good chance that people aren't going to want to uproot their family and, and consider a different position. I think most people want to see how, how it shakes out before they would consider applying for, for our position here. And I've, I've got other criteria, too, but you know, I'll let other people, you know, speak about this also.
Was Bob able to share any light, shed any light on whether or not he thinks that he can get it? I mean, I think the question maybe is for him. Can he get an applicant pool? Does he think he can? If we can maybe ask?
He indicated that the only search that they were moving forward with is one that was pretty far along in the process. And that the other ones that, that he was in earlier stages weren't, you know, were on hold for now also. So I don't know if that gives you an indication that, you know, that he or other municipalities feel like, you know, it's not an opportune time to be soliciting your candidates. Actually, getting ahold of the candidates right now might be really difficult, too, since they're typically not in their office. But that, you know, that's a minor point.
I mean, everybody's working remotely right now.
Yeah.
And they probably would use their personal information anyway, if they already had a job. They wouldn't.
You know, I, I think it also, you know, from my point of view, you have to realize that we are, you know, the longer that we go, the more money we're saving. And that's not, you know, a prime motivation to do this, but it certainly does help. Especially, you know, Anthony and I have talked about the workload. And you know, to, I wanted to find out whether or not performing all three functions, city manager, assistant city manager, and director of public works was a problem for him. And Anthony, you can speak for yourself, but you know, what we had talked about is that it, it took some adjustment and, and getting buy-in from some of the other staff members. But at this point, it's running pretty smoothly. Would you like to add anything to that, Anthony?
No, it's just, whatever the council, it's 100% council decision. I've got a lot of other staff members that are all itching in. And I think we're doing okay right now, but it's totally whatever the council decides. But I'm not overwor, I'm, I'm handling it fine if anyone's worried about burnout. I'm not there, but it's really whatever the council decides.
Yeah, and what we, you know, what was mentioned was that the staff members and department heads have taken on more responsibility. And then they seem to be doing a good job with that. Whether it be, you know, Karen or Laura, or even staff members like Brian Herr. You know, and there, there are certainly others. But the, the idea is that I think people have used it as an opportunity to to expand their, their expertise. And because of that, we don't seem to be, you know, I don't know that there's a major urgency to, to fill the position right now.
I mean, I, I have a lot of constituents that are asking me what the heck is going on, and they want updates from us.
So, so could we, could we maybe ask Mr. Slaven that question? What his, since that's sort of what we're paying for in his expertise, what he thinks? You know, if we were to, you know, not saying we will, but if we were to proceed, whether he thinks we'd really get an applicant pool? I guess that's what I've asked all along during this, is if we can ask him what his opinion is on whether or not it would be prudent to proceed at this time, if that makes sense.
Well, Barry, could you send an email to him and CC the council and say, hey, look, you know, we're, we're talking about maybe, you know, looking into moving along with this process. What do you think the prospects are of getting a decent applicant pool? And see what he says.
But I just didn't want to step on the communication path, so I.
Had we decided that Anthony was the main contact point?
Yeah, Anthony can send it and just CC all of us.
I can do that, and no matter what, there's no reason we don't have the profile back because the
Right.
three changes I think I sent him were just very simple. I'll ask for that, and then I'll indicate the, the order is lifted in, in our area. And what does he think about the ability to get a search? The council's wanting to know if they should start up now or what he recommends.
That would be great, thank you.
For his reply to everybody else.
Eleanor, I had a question about, is Webster using Slaven as all, as well? Or are they with another?
I mean, I, I think that they got 14 applications.
Oh, they haven't picked one yet?
They haven't picked one, but they're, they're nearing the end of choosing a firm.
Okay.
I mean, we, we were there end of January, I think. End of January, we were at that point. I just thought about the possibility of having an active search with our immediate municipal neighbor. That and whether if searches were proceeding, then you know, I don't know where in the process this Baldwin search was or is right now. But.
It is interesting that 14 firms have expressed interested, interest in, you know, performing these, these functions. I don't, I don't know what that indicates, if there's a lot of hungry people out there because there's fewer searches. It's, it's hard to, you know, draw conclusions from that. But I, I'm sure there's some significance there somewhere.
I'm sure Bob will give us some insight.
Okay.
Maybe the 10 other people started up firms because they were out of words.
Yeah. And then the other thing that I was hoping to talk about was the, the possibility of considering something around this third-party delivery service and the, the fees that are charged, the fines that are, or the fees that are attached to their, their use and making it more accessible to restaurants. And Anthony, were you able to?
Yeah, I did look into it. Laura, her today. She said there's about five of these out there right now. There's, you know, like, you've heard of the Postmates, DoorDash, Grubhub. There's, there's a couple of other big ones out there. She said she has not had one come from any businesses right now. And a lot of our businesses have kind of evolved, and they've gone out, and they're actually doing their own deliveries right now. But she doesn't see it as a.
Okay, I, because, I mean, a couple of businesses said to me that they didn't participate because of the fees, but if the fees were lower, then they would consider participating.
I honestly don't, I mean, I don't know that, that you can, you said Webster is, is saying that they can only charge a certain fee. I'm not even sure how that would, I mean.
Cities all across the nation are limiting the fees.
How are they, how are they? I haven't done my research, and, and as I was thinking about it. how do we enforce that?
You I mean, their sample, so this was, I mean, I think the first step is is actually asking more businesses, would they would they consider using the service if it were more affordable for them? You know, because just, you know, just because they don't use it doesn't mean that they wouldn't if they weren't charged like a 30 to 50%. And then the other, so there's some sample language that I sent you and we haven't had much time. This is a recent, this is a recent thing. So this is more like, do we want to see if people are interested and then look at some samples? So there's samples from cities, but then so there's language out there. Legislation that includes so I'm not sure how the regulation is done, but it's in that sample, the draft of it is in the sample that I sent you. So we could look at it. And the city of St. Louis is considering it and Webster may also be considering it. There's some interest from the small and in Webster, it's coming from the restaurants.
I I think that the best thing that we can do for our restaurant businesses to help them accommodate both pickups and deliveries is, you know, perhaps a ease up our restrictions on, you know, maybe create some dedicated pickup and delivery carriers. You know, we don't, first of all, we don't have a whole lot of parking, but make it more of a priority for pickups and deliveries. Yes, if someone doesn't, you know, just to make it easier and someone doesn't park there all day.
Just, we we have been meeting with, whether it's me and Laura or Laura, we've been meeting with business owners daily or talking with them daily. We've even got a special group that just restaurant owners that are meeting for these to discuss these issues. They, we've been working with them on delivery windows or like a, you know, so you could actually walk up to the front of the store to do so.
So like pickup.
Because of the rest of the stores closed, we haven't had to do the the to essentially section off portions for pickup, but we will, once, once that picks up and we will definitely create parking spaces for those businesses for people that want to drive up, walk out of their car, pick up their food and leave. We're also considering ways to try to make it easier for them to have outdoor dining. If you back up to the Marietta parking lot, you, the back, we have those crowd control barriers. We've got some picnic tables, we've got some other items that we've mentioned to the businesses and and you have several businesses now. I think the trend is people are looking to be outside. If it's not a carryout as opposed to inside because of the restriction, so we are doing everything we can to try to make it easier on the businesses.
And the draft that's of stuff that's floating around is asking third-party delivery to display city health department or county health department performance and inspection letter grades online. Prohibiting third-party delivery services from limiting the purchase prices. Covered establishments may charge for beverage, capping fees by third-party delivery services. Firing them to obtain business licenses. And to disclose the commissions that they pay. Not all of those things may work for a smaller municipality, but and I mean, in general, it's the, you know, smaller independent shops that are limited participating in the delivery services.
Eleanor, in your research, have you is is there a process by which the Department of Health, the County Health Department can vet delivery services?
Sorry, can you repeat that? I was reading.
You know, did you mention the county health department? Do they have a process in place where they can address delivery services?
I I don't believe the county can is doing anything with delivery services. I think that what this is, is like that the health grade gets posted inside the app.
Okay. Well, it it does bring up, you know, an issue with regards to you know, how how cautious the delivery service is. There is no process, you know, anyone can, I guess, decide that they're a delivery service and pick up food and deliver it. But you mentioned business licenses and other requirements, which you know, I'm not sure to what extent the existing delivery services, you know, conform with that.
I mean, I can see that that is if they have to get a business, I'm not sure if that's get a business license to operate in every single place that has one of these ordinances, because that's not really real. You know, so part, like something like that part, I don't think would function in a region like this.
When businesses operate in multi-jurisdictions, meaning many cities, you only get one business license. It's in the location in which your business is established or typically through St. Louis County. And I'd like to see the information. I'm not aware of any governmental entity other than the federal government through antitrust laws that's going to regulate pricing. If your concern is about what delivery services are charging as a fee, that's economics. Cities don't have any authority to regulate, but I want to charge for your services.
Yeah, when I did a Google search, when Eleanor brought it up, it looks like it's mostly larger cities. Thing that comes up is a lot of them making it clear what you're charging on the receipt so consumers know. And then
That's a different issue.
Larger cities have passed something, but they, the restaurants or the services are threatening to sue. Maybe making that argument, but.
Yeah, I mean, I I like the idea, but you know, two things that I saw, one, one was the you know, how do, how do we tell Grubhub or Uber Eats that, hey, if you're delivering or picking up from the Maplewood area that you have a cap on fees. And and two, you know, the 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 economics of this of this style of business, which has been going on a while, has obviously caused a lot of issues. And if businesses feel that they can make money by using them, because a lot of them know what the fees are and let them continue to use it. You know, again, it's a, it's a thing of economics, but yeah, I mean, it'd be nice to. I mean, I've seen some of the invoices from Grubhub and it's just amazing to me. I saw $1,000 worth of food sold and the restaurant ended up getting $300 after all the fees and commissions paid and all this other kind of stuff and and yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just a tough, tough, tough thing for for restaurants right now. I mean, of course, in any pandemic, service industries are going to get crushed, but yeah, I just, you know, I I like the idea and it'd be nice to have John take a look at it for that, but I I don't, I don't know if we'll, we'll be able to get it too, too far with it. Only because they could just refuse to do it and then we'd have to sue them and most of those companies have a lot more money than we do. I heard Uber Eats is going to buy Grubhub. That just came out today. There's been talk on the street, so these companies are going to get monstrous. And I don't know, it's a tough question, it's a good one, I like it. I just don't know what what we can do, but if we can do something, that'd be great, in my opinion.
I'm somewhat surprised that free market competition, you know, there's not a whole lot of overhead involved in, you know, in delivering food besides having a car. And so I'm, I'm somewhat amazed that a lot of privateers haven't jumped into the into the mix and approached the, you know, the restaurants to deliver.
There are, there are St. Louis-based, there's several little small companies that do do delivery. But usually they're, they're booked quite a bit out, so and they don't have the resources and.
Yeah.
Things like.
To run like a pretty slick app that is easy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think too, it comes to light, I think people weren't realizing how much they were charging. And I think the idea that consumers now know that may make them choose not to use it, which is good, which would help. Because.
I I've never.
I haven't either, but.
No way, I'll go get it or.
Are they available for hire?
Yeah, I charged 50% though, Barry, for mares.
Well, it's, it sounds like, you know, we're in agreement that, you know, and and Jenny, I think that you're right. As soon as someone uses it one time, you know, they, you know, they can make a decision whether it's worth their while to do it the second time. And.
Well, now that they're aware, what, they want to know what they were spending, so.
I have been using our local eateries are some of my faves that do do their own delivery and I love that. I'm a single mom and I have a life, it's a lifesaver for me because I can't always throw my two little kids in the car to go do. So.
Yeah.
No, I I agree and I I know that in Maplewood, you've had some, some businesses such as Strange Donuts and a few other that have really done a fabulous job with dealing with this pandemic in terms of delivery and all those kinds of things. You know, and I think the problem with, and I'll stop after this, but the the biggest problem with the Grubhubs and the Uber Eats of the world is that that the consumer up until recently wasn't really aware of just how much money they were charging the restaurants to do it. And and like Jenny, I think that now that consumers are more aware, their chances are probably, because they're not going to use it as much because they know their favorite restaurant's getting, you know, you know, taken for a ride on that for somebody's new beach house in Florida, so. Anyway, that's all I got.
Okay.
All I got.
As far as the the mayor's report, this question is for John. You know, are we ever, you know, you mentioned that we're operating virtually based on this emergency situation. When does it occur that, you know, if it's not declared an emergency situation before or in the future, are we required to meet in person?
Again, the judgment of whether or not there's an emergency mayor is a, is a good one. Certainly, the declaration by the governor and certainly the declaration by the county executive were binding upon us. But we also, and again, we're all going to have to judge at what point in time we can gather in a same room and still have safe distancing. You're going to have logistical problems, just of the council members up on the dais. Zoomed, you all will be too close to each other and candidly, I'll be too close to you and I'll be too close to to Anthony. And those who want to attend will be too close to each other. So we're going to, I don't know when we're going to cross the line as to where we'll all be comfortable meeting in a same room or how we can be separated enough in order to hold a council meeting. It's a great question, Mayor, and I I intended to talk to Anthony about it as we get closer to the next meeting, meaning next week, we're going to have to talk about whether or not it is feasible and practical for some or all of us to attend a meeting in the council chambers. That's a tough call and it's a tough call. Candidly, you and Anthony, as the city, as the chief administrative officer, we're going to have to decide whether or not, even though the stay-at-home order has been modified, whether or not we're still in a state of emergency that would warrant us meeting remotely.
No. My guess is that you guys will keep us informed as to.
So in a nutshell, John, correct, John, correct me if I'm wrong, as long as the city determines there's an emergency, then there's still an emergency. And and this, I, we could, we could do, in the future, right now, we had nine people in the room. The limit's 10, so you'd really limit any public participation. We could also do a hybrid where, you know, John remains at his house. Mayor Greenberg, myself and one or two other council members are in there and they're perfectly separated. And other members are at home. We could do the Zoom meeting on the overhead and and run it just the same as we've always done, but have some people there, some people not, but right now, like John said, I don't know how we'd be meeting and still keeping a safe distance unless we added additional tables. And if, even if we did do that, I don't know how we're going to be able to have anyone from the public there anyway right now without going over the limit of 10.
Yeah.
But the next meeting I don't plan on, unless the council wants to change, I don't, I plan on holding the same meeting until things shake out a little bit. And so if anyone wants to change that, just let me know. I'm actually at all now because then I can access my computer, it's easier, so makes no difference to me. I'll probably be doing these meetings from here from now on. Just have more access to records.
Okay.
Following up.
Personally, I was just going to say, I'm following the epidemiologists that are reporting from Wash U and the Health Task Forces and they're really recommending that the earliest we can safely open is like that we should not be doing any changes until till July at the earliest. So just those are the, those are the data pieces that I'm looking at.
And Alan, I was going to make the same point. We're all receiving data from different sources. Obviously, you're one of the best sources of information, the scientists who can help us understand when it's going to be safe for us to gather again and it, and at what distance. So even though we have the governor who's opened up the state to a degree and we have the county executive who as of a certain date is saying that he's opening it up in the county up to a degree, it will still be up to the city council members, the mayor, Anthony, all to determine whether under their particular circumstances, they want to attend the meeting at the council in the council chambers or attend it remotely. Obviously, we're in uncharted waters. The sunshine law doesn't describe what is or is not an emergency, but as Anthony was alluding to, if this body is experiencing, believes that we are continuing to experience an emergency, then we should continue to meet remotely.
And if I thought that in in any way that inhibited our ability to perform our function as as elected officials, you know, I would, I would think differently about it, but I think that this is an effective forum for us not only to communicate with each other and conduct our business, but it actually, you know, should probably be more of a more efficient in terms of outreach with our, you know, with our constituents. And we had quite a few last time, not as many this time. But people might have looked at the agenda and said, you know, we only have a couple of items on here. And, you know, so it's hard to tell, but you know, and it also gives Ray, you know, opportunity probably to to turn off his, his computer and and get some dinner or something, I don't know, but.
I did, I did have a question though, if, when, when it is determined that it's, you know, safe to do it in person. But if someone can't, or even just in general going forward, if someone can't attend a meeting in person because they're out of town, but willing to do it via this format, does, do our ordinances allow for that currently?
The sunshine law, Jenny, allows council members to attend when they're out of town.
Okay.
In emergency, but they're unable to attend. The difficult part, I don't understand why the sunshine law provides for this, but it says that council members can participate. provides for this, but it says that council members can participate, and they can vote on matters and accept format voting, which is done by roll call.
Okay.
Opposite, because you obviously, roll call, you can clearly call.
Right.
If they call for a vote and everybody says aye, and you're either on Zoom or by phone.
Right.
You're sort of caught up in the, in the other voices. But that's, I didn't write it. I just interpreted, that's what it says. You can participate, but you cannot participate in a roll call vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have anything else as far as the mayor's report. City attorney?
I have nothing to report. I think I have reported enough in response to your question there.
Appreciate it. City managers' report?
We believe we'll be starting, we'll be opening next week. I don't have a specific date yet because we've got thermometers and a couple of other things we're still waiting on. But I anticipate we'll be open next week. I'll make sure to send an email out to everyone and let them know. We've set up hand washing stations for our staff. We're going to, we're going to have a sanitizing station out front. We've got, we've got an order in today of 250 and 95 masks for our front office staff and anyone that would be in at city hall. And we've obviously moved a lot of furniture around to create a lot of separation. So we are anticipating next week, we're also going to get some signage from our health insurance or from our insurance company to make sure we keep all the proper postings. So. But I think we'll be ready to go next week. I don't have a definite date yet, just because I'm waiting on the quick read thermometers. We ordered a couple of those and we're just waiting on those. That's all I have.
Okay. And I don't believe that there is a need to hold a closed session. So I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn? Okay.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
But have a good evening.
Thank you.
Be safe.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Bye.
Bye.